Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Monday, August 3rd, 2020, Meeting of the Town Council. I call this meeting to order and if we could have a pledge of allegiance to begin the meeting with please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now for attendance of the councilors, I see. I see all of us here. Excellent. We're all in attendance. Sheri, for item number four, public engagement, do we have anyone who would like to engage?
No one has notified me.
Excellent. Thank you. We will move on then. I need a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from July. From July 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on that? Nothing. Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote. Paul?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimously approved. Item number six, we'll move to the Public Safety Building update and I will throw that over to you Steve.
I'm gonna throw it over to the Town Council. He gets all the glory on this one, so I think Tom is the best one to speak.
Yes, he does.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm very happy to say that there was a Zoom hearing on Friday, July 24, before Justice Jackie Cowan of the Middlesex Superior Court. She heard an argument from Mr. Mitchell and from me about Mr. Mitchell's application for preliminary injunction to require the town to extend the time available for him to get signatures, to put the Public Safety Building question on a referendum ballot and to reduce by half the number of signatures required and to force the town to accept electronic signatures for the first time. The judge was extremely conversant with the memoranda filed by both sides and after about an hour following the argument, she issued a written decision denying the preliminary injunction and in fact dismissing the case. So.
Fastest decision ever. But you know, I was at the hearing. She was incredibly thoughtful. She had clearly read the briefs. She was respectful to both parties. She commended both parties. And I just want to thank you, Tom, for, you know, your work on this and in such a clear argument.
Thank you.
So procedurally, and then if anyone has any questions, what is our next step? Are we just, we have to wait for the appeals window?
Yeah, there's no alternative to waiting for the expiration of the 30-day appeal period. I have no doubt that any appeal would be unsuccessful, but still, we dare not go to the bond market. You know, Bond Council wouldn't allow us.
Right.
Until that period is expired.
And who do they appeal to, Tom?
It would be the Mass Appeals Court.
Okay. Any questions by councilors? Or comments?
I was gonna say if I could, Madam Chair.
Sure, of course.
I agree with Tom. Our Bond Council, like everything else that was passed at the town meeting, is ready to go and it is, makes a lot of sense to package these together because our costs go down and is greater, you know, there's greater savings for the taxpayer. And they're getting proceedings to get everything ready to go. And, but one of the questions that we do need to answer is there, are there any lawsuits or legal ramifications that could harm the interest of any of the projects? And right now, the answer is no. We can't answer that because we're still on appeal. So once that's done, we can be ready to go.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments or questions? No. Okay. So as it's not 6:15 yet, with regard to our public hearing, I'm going to jump to see what we can do. How about John Smolinski? I see you here. Why don't we take you out of order? We can go to item number 10 and talk about the sidewalk sale. There you go.
Sorry, I was unmute. This is a sale that we are, we're gonna replicate that we, the last time we had one was two years ago and it was a single date and it went fairly well, but we did it once and there wasn't a lot of continuity to it. And there was some discussion among our members and actually, some of the councilors may remember at the last breakfast meeting, Jonathan, Julie and Maureen, that we had some discussion about a series of sidewalk sales to create some continuity and some follow-up and an identity that would bring people downtown. Once again, this would be open to all of the Wakefield businesses, Chamber and non-Chamber members. And through an extraordinary extended helping hand from our two local institutions, they've made this an opportunity that I think will benefit the merchants, benefit the consumers and patrons that come to town, as well as the restaurants. So it's, and a win-win-win. Extraordinarily, the Wakefield Cooperative Bank and the Wakefield Savings Bank have stepped up to underwrite this program in the sense that they're offering an incentive by supplying a limited amount of cash to the Chamber that during the sidewalk sale, which the first date is actually the sales tax holiday, so it's a nice way to jump off, they are offering us some funds and I've worked it out with Mr. Mayo and Jeff at the Co-op and Bob at the Savings Bank, that for every $50 you spend at a retail merchant, which could be Hots, could be Sweet Bay, could be anybody, not a food purveyor, but for every $50 you spend at a local merchant, we'll get a $10 gift certificate issued by the Chamber that will allow you to go to any participating restaurant. So we've got a lot of houses lined up in a row that we're holding back to hopefully get the approval and the support of the council to move this forward. And as I said, the retail merchants benefit because the incentive is if you come in and spend $50, you're getting $10 back and a gift certificate plus the sales tax holiday. And that benefits the patron because they're getting $50 back. And then you also have the restaurateurs who are gonna benefit from it as well. And of course, the two banks getting a lot of goodwill for the support of it. What we're trying to do is also promote this, unlike before where we didn't have as much effort, opportunity for effort, is we're looking at not, the last time was, I'm trying to say this in a fat manner that's clear for everybody. Even though it was open to the entire community last time, this time, we're hoping to not only have it open to the community, but with enough advanced notice, reach out to some members and non-members in Greenwood, some individuals on Albion Street, some individuals on Main Street, businesses, to work like little hubs to communicate for us, to these businesses, what the Chamber is doing and what we're trying to do for the benefit of the entire community. We have some businesses down at Four Corners at the other end of town. So what we're hoping to do is spread the word. A lot, you know, and we can't control who opens, who doesn't open. It's all voluntary. But we're trying to have greater outreach to let those other parts of the community, like Greenwood, like Albion Street and North Ave and not just Main Street, know that we're trying to do this for everybody and this $10 gift certificate is town-wide. You go hire a Betten's Electric Company or you go to Batten Brothers or you go to Hots, any merchant, non-food vendor and will see the benefit of the gift certificate.
You want it.
Yeah, it's, John, I think it's a wonderful idea and you've heard me say many times before that's one of my warmest memories as a, you know, pre-teen and teen, when the sidewalk sale hit Wakefield and all the businesses were engaged. During COVID, having larger events is just not possible right now. And I think moving forward for this year, I don't think it's gonna be possible either as we're seeing numbers creep up in other places. So this is a way to still give, have us engaged with the community, with the merchants, giving something back that we can handle on a smaller scale. So wonderful.
Madam Chairman, we're keeping the same parameters that you approved the last time. No blocking of sidewalks. We are encouraging the continued use of masks. We're not expecting, because we're hoping to spread it all over town, we're not expecting a flash mob type of situation. People to be shopping and if they come out in the street, there'll be common sense with separation and such. So as much as we can control it, we're trying to put those parameters in place. Common sense, again, taking place 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And as I said, we're trying to do it in a manner that encourages all businesses to participate. And I cannot say enough to the thanks to Saugus Cooperative Bank and the Savings Bank for stepping up to support this for the Chamber. Because this is an incredibly town-wide incentive.
We should thank the Wakefield Cooperative Bank, not the Saugus. I'm sure Saugus is lovely.
35 years in the wrong town, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayo, please extend my apologies to Jeff.
All right.
John?
I won't leave that one down, I'm sure.
Can you please remind us of the three weekends that you've indicated?
What we'd like, Madam Chairman, is we'd like to start Saturday, August 29th, which coincides with the sales tax holiday.
Yep.
Then a month later, September 26th, and then a month later, October 24th. And this gives us a chance, I've sent Steve a copy of the logo we've developed and we're developing it so it creates an identity and a branding. And we're hoping to be able to plan for it. People, we might not catch up with them the first time, but if they catch on, the momentum will carry forward all three weekends. And it's just not a one, one-day-end-all thing. You know, we, we've been bunched up inside for a while as an organization and this way, we're helping not just the restaurants, but everyone else come outside and enjoy all the downtown Wakefield and Greenwood and the other parts of the community has to offer.
Thank you, John. I'll put it up to any councilors if they have questions before we take a vote. Sorry, I'm not looking at my raising hand function here. I'm Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And John, thank you so much. I think this is a really great idea. You know, we talked a couple of meetings ago about having some of these sort of smaller events, you know, given the situation that we're in to try to promote, you know, some, some activity downtown and in our stores and businesses across the town. So this is terrific. Just the one request I had is, I believe at least two of those dates also coincide with dates that the farmer's market is operating. And so it would be great if we could think about ways to do sort of cross-promotion for both the sidewalk sale and the farmer's market and maybe use each event to kind of bolster the other one as well. But otherwise, very, very supportive of this and, you know, look forward, look forward to all three dates.
I'm sure that Jonathan, people could visit both or do both and I'm happy to reach out to the farmer's market and coordinate that with them. It's a good suggestion.
Great suggestion. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Okay. So Steve, we need a vote, simply a vote to approve the three weekends as listed?
Yes. Exactly. And there aren't any streets being blocked off or anything like that, so.
So if I could please have a motion and a second to approve sidewalk sale for the weekend of August 29th, 2020, September 26th and October 24th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Ed. Second by Julie, without her sound on, but I could read lips. So take a roll call vote. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter? Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Excellent. Unanimous vote to support all three weekends. John, thank you so much. Really looking forward to this.
Thank you, Madam. And thank you to the entire Board of Councilors. Thank you all for your support.
Absolutely. So that timing was pretty brilliant if I, you know, don't say so myself. So the public hearing will start in moments for the poll petition at 55 Court Street. This is item 7A. And Gas and Light Department, I assume, is going to present on that. So as soon as 6:15 hits, which should be in a moment. Is Bill gonna present on that, Steve?
I actually believe that.
Or Joe?
No.
Oh, the Light Department, sorry. I'm mixing my, my favorite town departments. Vinnie McMahon is gonna present on that.
How is everybody?
So we are at the, the opening of the public meeting. What'll happen, Vin, is you'll present, the councilors will have questions and then we'll open it up for any public participation or questions at that point. So why don't you go ahead, Vin?
Madam Chair, just a question. Do we need to vote to go into the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Yes, we do. Good, good point, Jonathan. Can I please have a roll call vote to enter? Motion and second to enter the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. We're in the public hearing now. Vin, all yours.
All right. So this poll petition is just for moving a pole at 55 Court Street, just 10 feet up the road. It is a cul-de-sac and we're moving just for, just for our customers. They wanna install. The only abutter is that customer. Should I share my screen or anything? Or do you guys have papers on this?
We have papers on it, but as it's a public hearing, if you could share your screen, that would be good.
Yeah, sure.
You've been given co-host ability, so you should be able to share your screen.
All right. So this is the house. This is the pole. And we're just proposing to move it 10 feet because, you know, it's out of the three-feet buffer zone. And the customer wants to move their driveway here. And like I said, right up here over to the side, that's the end of the road. So they're actually the end of this cul-de-sac.
So you've had no other concerns? Clearly 55 Court Street, once it moved, you've had no other concerns from any of the other neighbors or? That you know of?
No, I mean, it, it's really not in the way of anyone else's host. It's really only in front of their host. I haven't heard anything from anybody else.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the councilors have any comments or questions for Mr. McMahon? Jonathan?
You're on mute.
Thank you. Just a quick question. In this circumstance, is this something that the resident requested or something that? Yeah, I guess where was the process? And the question I'm getting at is, if it is something that was requested, is this typically a service that the individual who requested it would pay for it or the, the Gas and Light Department would pay?
No, typically, in a situation like this, you know, it's kind of a case-by-case basis. In this situation, they wouldn't pay for it. As you know, half the poles in our town are owned by Verizon. Verizon usually would make people pay. We, if it's just one pole and it's not a difficult one, usually we'll just do it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any hand raised. Okay. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments for Mr. McMahon or the councilors? Seeing none.
Madam Chair? I know that Mr. Hornsby is on the line.
Oh, okay.
He is the owner of, but he hasn't unmuted himself. Maybe he doesn't want to. But he did come to my office today and did want to be on, wanted to be part of this and he is certainly very much in favor for this. Of course, it's gonna really help him get better access to his driveway. He's gonna move the curbing and everything, so.
Great.
I think he's, are you nodding, Mr. Hornsby?
Yeah.
I think so. Good. Perfect.
Okay. If you, if you wanna say anything, Mr. Hornsby, please feel free to mute, but unmute yourself. But if not, we can go ahead with the vote. Okay. So I need a motion and a second to approve the poll petition. Gas and Light Department is presented at 55 Court Street.
So moved.
So moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by, I think, Maureen? Yes. All in favor, we'll do a roll call. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Vinnie. And now we need to, a motion to move out of public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Roll call, myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter? Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul? So that, that ends the public hearing for the movement of the pole at 55 Court Street. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So item 7C, we can schedule a Gas and Light Department poll petition public hearing on Murray Street for September 14th, 2020 at 6:15 PM. Do we, is that a motion, Steve?
Yeah. Just a motion. Yep.
Can someone please move and second?
So moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Peter. Vote to have this hearing on September 14th. It's at?
7:15.
At 7:15. The times will change for the beginning of our town council meetings come September. So that will be 7:15. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay. So moved. Item 9A. We need a motion to authorize the Town Council Clerk, Sheri, to advertise for members of the Disability Commission as requested by co-chairs of the Disability Commission. A motion and second, please?
So moved.
So moved. Paul, second. Ed, maybe? Okay. A roll call vote. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Checking the time. Item 9B, if we can have a motion to authorize the appointment of Michael Lavecchia as the Vacation Replacement Inspector of Buildings?
So moved.
So moved by Julie, seconded by Paul. Roll call, vote. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay. So what, 6:22. Let me, I'm gonna go to item 12A. And we need a, a motion and a second. The Human Rights Commission seeks approval to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the Human Rights Commission in the amount of $1,000 with thanks.
So moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
Second.
By Jonathan. In any discussion, I'll start with it. I am frantically looking through my emails because the president, chairperson of Human Rights, Maria Muti, sent me a lovely, here it is. She just wanted to acknowledge Cynthia Newell and the staff of Greenwood Liquors, thanking them once again for their incredibly generous donation to Wakefield ARC. It was unexpected, unexpected, but still comes as a welcome surprise. While they don't have a specific plan in mind just yet, we promise to remain true to your request to use it in building a stronger Wakefield community for all. With gratitude, Maria Muti, Chair, Wakefield Human Rights Commission. So we had a, yes, we had a motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call, vote to approve the award, the donation. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Excellent. 12B, the library also seeks approval to expect, accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $100 with thanks. A motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter? Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, I'm gonna ask your, for your wisdom, if you think we can do anything in five minutes?
I, I think you can do the Betterment on Walton Lane, right above.
Sure. So we'll, we'll, sorry, we're, for those following, we're jumping all around the agenda, but we have a public hearing scheduled at 6:30 and we can take care of some smaller business. The Betterment, item number 12, is the Walton Lane Order, estimating Betterment. And Steve, is that yours?
Will Renault is on, but it isn't your package. And this was, this was a town meeting. This was Article 19 at town meeting where the members of Abutters on Walton Lane, which is a private way, met with the engineering department and decided that they did want to have their lane, have their way, lane, have their lane repaved and, and ultimately will be accepted as a public way, I hope. And this is being, cost being borne by the Abutters. So this is no town cost there. I believe that this is equal, we're gonna do this equally, equal shares for each owner there. Doesn't matter what their frontage is, they voted to do that. So this is pretty standard. We do this all the time. The procedure is town meeting approves it and then the town council needs to approve it as well. I will need your signatures on the Betterment because that will get reported to registry of deeds. So that'll be at town hall for your signatures at some point, if it passes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Steve or Bill? This is something that we've discussed a few times in prior meetings and also at town at our last town meeting. Any comments or questions? Sorry. Looking at my participant hand raising. Nope. Okay. So I need a motion and a second to in order approving the Betterment?
Yes. Okay.
So moved.
So moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. Roll call, vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So approved. Let's see. I guess we could, we have two minutes. If, if one or two folks wanna do some announcements as opposed to doing them at the end of the meeting and then we'll jump back to anyone.[1710.96] Does anyone have a, a short announcement before we jump into our, our final hearing? Sorry, I keep forgetting to look at hand raising. No one, so everyone's gonna be quiet, right? When it comes to announcements? Or they have longer announcements than two minutes? All right.
I can, I can do, I can do one, Anne.
Excellent, Julie, thank you.
All the time. So, um, just a quick question for you. Are all committees actually now meeting on Zoom? Where do we stand on that?
At, most, if not all of them are meeting on Zoom right now. There's a couple that haven't taken up again during the summer and, and what have you. But I think the, those few that aren't, one of them is actually scheduled one for August, that's Traffic Advisory. So they have a little meeting coming up. And everybody else has basically met. I, I can't think of any offhand that haven't. So most, we have done, most committees have kept going. So I'm, I'm very proud of them. They've embraced Zoom. They've done a really good job. We've had some complicated public hearings on Zoom. So most have done very well, yes.
And so Traffic Advisory will start then meeting.
Most are meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And Sherri, to the best of your knowledge, is that the only committee that has not yet met on Zoom?
Yes, yeah, I went through them all today and, yeah, that was, that's the only one, yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much. And so we are now at 6:30. So we need a vote, a motion and a second to enter the public hearing for liquor application for Ben 123 Incorporated located at 21 Broadway Street.
So moved.
Second, Jonathan, seconded by Paul, roll call vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Excellent. So do we have, and we, we have the parties present and do we have an attorney or someone? Yes. If you could please unmute yourself and identify yourself and where you live, and then you can present.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. My name is May Hui Fu. I represent Ben 123 Inc. Both my clients, Xue Bing Zeng and Xiu Yue Lei are both present. They're in my office, that's why we keep our mask on until it's our turn to speak. We are proposing a basically family business. Xue Bing and Xiu Yue, our husband and wife. Xue Bing has been in restaurant business for over 20 years. Xiu Yue is more fluent in English, but she also has extensive experience working in restaurant business where alcohol beverages are served. She understands that in order for her to actually work as a alcohol manager, she needs additional training. So today she already signed up for a alcohol server training. And before the time that the alcohol license is approved, she'll definitely make sure that she gets her certificate. And there is no change to the existing menu or the operations. Basically, we are carry on with the existing business and the same hours as well.
Thank you. And Steve, can, is this, um, what's the existing restaurant right now?
Bamboo House.
Bamboo House, thoughts on that?
Yep.
Okay.
And also, Madam Chair, we did receive the green cards as well, so the people, Butters were notified, and we did receive those as well.
Okay. And, of course, Steve and or Sherri, are all the forms and is everything filled out according to what we require?
Yep, everything's filled out. Fingerprinting is done.
Excellent.
They're in good shape, yeah.
Excellent. And do any of the counselors have any questions for our new neighbors? Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question was related to the certification. Are you referring to TIPS certified? When you mentioned attorney who about does not yet have that training, but will?
Yes, that's the training that she signed up for today. And we don't have a time for her actual training yet. Because COVID, everything has taken longer. But if that were a, that is a concern for the board. I would suggest that maybe we can make that part of the conditions when we come in to, to pick up our license.
Is there, there's no one else within the organization that has more Paul, that this person would be the, the manager in relation to alcohol? I'm just concerned about someone with, without experience and candidate, at this point not even trained, to be the person who's presiding over alcohol sales and consumption?
Yes, your concern is well taken. Again, she actually has worked in restaurants where alcohol beverages are served, so she's familiar with the rules. The only thing that is lacking is that she's not officially certified under any kind of a serve safe or TIPS training.
Had she not served though in the other establishments that you were, she had had to have had some sort of certification to have done that?
There was not requirement in the past.
So I guess just to this body, I, I do have a concern about the fact that we're talking about a manager that doesn't have this, the certification at this point and, and doesn't have any experience relative to this.
Well, my feeling is we're not going to approve, we wouldn't approve the granting of the permit without that tip, without the TIPS certification being all set. So I certainly, I don't have a problem with approving it contingent upon the TIPS certification being qualified and in everything done officially the way it's supposed to. ABBC has to, ABCC has to go through this as well, which will take a little bit of time. So I'm assuming the TIPS certification is gonna happen even before ABCC gets through the paperwork. But we've done this in the past before when we've made something contingent upon a final piece? If any of the other counselors want to have any comments?
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to have, make a comment.
Sure.
Thank you. In regards to the TIPS certification, I, I've taken the, the exam online and, and, and it's just, it just makes me aware of what the state and ABC rules are. But it doesn't give me the background knowledge as to being a manager of a facility. So I understand what Mr. Dombrowski's concerns are. Because this person has not had managerial experience. She's worked in an establishment and she's served alcohol. She didn't make the drinks, or she would have needed to be TIPS certified if she was making the drinks. So there is an issue in my agreement with Ed that there is no experience with this person to become a manager. So when we do issue the license, we just have to be aware there is nobody in the business that will be in there that has had previous experience on handling as manager to a, a restaurant serving alcohol. Thank you.
It's not without, it's not without precedent, precedence that this board has issued I hear, this type of license without someone having a full resume of management. So I just, I also want to bring that up. I, you know, I think it's up to the folks that are running the restaurant that they have to abide by all the rules. They have to be professional and responsible. And if, if they're not, things will happen. I, you know, their attorney suggested that there is some experience. It might not be at the full managerial. You have to start somewhere, I believe. So if the paperwork is in order and we can impress upon the new owners that we take the serving, the service of alcohol very seriously. We take over serving very seriously. We want to make sure that people are running a vibrant, excellent restaurant, but being responsible. I don't have a problem issuing the permit as long as all the paperwork and the, the the requirements are in order. But I'm welcome, I'm happy to hear from anyone else. Julie?
I, I completely agree with you. So just to be clear, to get the permit, really, they are in compliance other than this TIPS. And so we would make it conditional on getting the TIPS certification. Yeah, and, and I agree with everything you said. I, I think it's really not for us to judge kind of what the managerial, if it's a business you're running. And if, you know, you need to run the business well and stay in compliance with our rules and state rules around alcohol and, and those conditions. So I agree with you.
Great. Any other comments? Ed?
I think there is a distinction here, though, because there's a reason that people come before us, because there is a certain level of discretion that's built in here. And when we've had other businesses that have come in, for the most part, at least in my experience, the person whose manager has been, you know, TIPS or served certified previously and has had experience with, you know, as manager with respect to alcohol. And so it does give me pause that this is a little bit of, of, of a difference. I don't disagree that we have set a precedent for conditioning approval on certain things happening, but I don't think that we should lose sight of the fact that a lot of other restaurants that have come before us have presented nominees who have at least had that certification before coming before us, but many of whom have also had a relevant experience in this role, and that, that is lacking here. So I think it's an important distinction to be drawn.
Thanks, Ed. Any other comments? Nope. Okay. So I guess the vote would be that, let me just make sure, that the liquor, liquor application for Ben 123 located at 21 Broadway Street would be issued contingent upon the completion of all necessary paperwork, including the tip safe, tip serve. Is that what it's called? Sorry. Tip serve. Tip serve certification.
So moved.
Moved by Jonathan, second? Second, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I, I, one more, one more thing. So, so we're, we're asking them to obtain the TIPS certification. Will they also be required to make sure that they're serve safe certified as well as a manager of the establishment? Through the Board of Health or through the state?
There has to be a serve safe qualifications for those that work there, isn't that correct, Steve?
Yes, that, that, that's, that's not what's in front of you tonight, though. You're, you have a lic, license only, yeah.
Okay.
Before we take our vote, does any member of the public have any comments or questions that they want to address? This is a public hearing. If you could raise your hand with the hand raise function or just give a little, hey? Nope. Okay. Looks like no, no public comments. Ma'am, do your clients want to say anything? Do they have any, do they, would like, they like to make a?
Let me turn it on for them.
Sure.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Excellent. Any other, that's, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I will, let's go around on the vote. The vote at the liquor license is contingent upon receiving certification we talked about, as well as all other paperwork being in order. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed? Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Paul?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Mute. Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Congratulations and welcome to town. We look forward to everything being in order.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
To have a good evening, thank you. We need to do a, a vote to come out of the public hearing. Can I have a, a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Moved by Paul, second by Ed. Myself, yes, Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, we're out of the public hearing. Thank you all. So now we're on item eight, the proposed 40B development, Crescent Commons Development. And Brian, am I throwing that to you?
That would be fine, if, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, if you could just identify yourself.
Sure. For the record, Brian McGrail with offices at 599 North Avenue in Wakefield, representing Crescent Commons Development LLC. May I proceed?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. With us tonight on the various screens of Zoom, on one screen is Joseph and Steve Bichelis. They are the managers of Crescent Commons LLC, the proponent. Also with us is local architect and Wakefield resident, Peter Sandors, who's the architect on this project. Rick Salvo, who's a principal of Engineering Alliance, is in charge of Site Civil. And finally, Tony Hall with New Seeds Development LLC is the 40B consultant on this. Tony has significant experience in this area. And she has been the liaison with Mass Housing and helped fill out all the paperwork in that regard and will be involved in this project from the beginning to the end. Crescent Commons Development LLC has applied for site approval with Mass Housing for eligibility related to a multifamily residential development to be located at 44 through 48 Crescent Street. There's actually three properties there, 44, 46 and 48. The Bichelis are, have ownership interest in those or in controlling those properties. Mass Housing approval would be followed by an application in public hearing before the Wakefield Board of Appeals, where the project would be reviewed in extreme detail, as they always are. Mass Housing has requested initial comments from the Wakefield Town Council. So we thought it might be helpful for us to make a presentation and be available to answer any questions that you might have. And that's why I asked our consultants to be available tonight and at the meeting. Our presentation will be rather brief because you have already received a copy of the very detailed three-ring binder package that was submitted to Mass Housing related to this project. The project as constituted is comprised of 56 rental units. Thirty of those units would be one bedroom, of which eight would be affordable. Nineteen of the units would be two bedroom, of which four would be affordable. And seven of the units would be three bedroom, with two of those being affordable. Thus, as required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, 25% or 14 of the units would be affordable dwelling units that would be subject to lottery and assignment of those units based on need. An important note is that because this is a rental project, the town of Wakefield will get credit for all 56 units in the DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development subsidized housing inventory list. So it's not just the 14 units that would be counted, but rather 56 in helping the town reach the state mandated goal of 10%. Wakefield is currently, from my last look, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure Tony will correct me, but just above seven, I think it's about 7.2% of that 10% goal. Could I go to the next slide? This was, was everyone in control? Thank you very much. This, 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 this page hopefully orients you to the site. You can see it labeled on Crescent Street, just off of Water Street. The site consists of 25,113 square feet of land. It's located in the general residence zoning district. It is adjacent to the business zoning district, and it's also within close proximity to downtown Wakefield in an area that includes businesses and multifamily dwellings. The site is located very close to an MBTA bus line in the downtown shopping district. And the commuter rail is approximately half a mile away. To orient you, the site across the street from the site on Crescent Street is, is Wakefield Tire. And there's a gas station at the corner of Water Street. If you're facing out from the site, to the right is Crescent Hill, which is a neighborhood that goes up off of Crescent Street. Across the street from Crescent Street are a number of multifamily dwellings. Most of those are six-family dwelling houses. And behind those are Princess Plaza Office Building. Just to the other, other side of Crescent Hill. Just to the other, other side of Crescent Hill is Crescent Arms Apartment Building. And then, of course, we have our Public Safety Building. Uh, and then as you go further down, Brightview Senior Living, mixed in with some residential uses also on Crescent Street. If we could go to the next slide, please. This gives you a little bit more of a close-up on the site. You can see the Wakefield Tire across the street. Uh, this location virtually checks all of the boxes for locations in amenities that Mass Housing looks for in a site, being close proximity to the transit, shopping area, various amenities that will be available to the folks that live there. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is the architectural design that Mr. Sandors has come up with. It's designed to be compatible with the area. Uh, it would be comprised of a hardy plank type exterior, which is really weather resistant over the years, easy maintenance, with traditional two-over-one glazing, residential double-hung windows in a varied staggered facade, which we believe fits into the area. If we could go to the next slide. This is the site plan that was derived by Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance. The building is situated as far from the side and rear of butters as possible, with open areas on both sides of the rear and the side yards. There's 67 parking spaces that are being provided. What's very unique about this project is the majority of them are in a garage underneath the building. So 50 of them will be garage spaces, the remaining 17, we call them surface, but they're going to be under the building, but not inside a garage. So really, there's not too much of a parking area that you're going to, to see with this project. It will be, it will be hidden beneath the building. And it also, as you can see, the access is, is very good to this site because it has driveway access off of Crescent Street and off of Crescent Hill, as proposed. You can get into the parking garage both ways. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is again just a makeup of the units that we talked about. So of the, on the affordable units, there's going to be eight one-bedroom affordable units. There'll be four two-bedroom and two three-bedroom. As I mentioned, a total of six, of 56 units. Uh, as I'm sure the town council is, is very well aware of the housing crisis in Massachusetts and the entire country. A driving force of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, is to meet the goal that every person in Massachusetts should have a safe, healthy, and affordable place to call home. Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B achieves this by advocating for opportunity, expanding ask, access to housing in areas such as this site that are readily accessible to public transportation and amenities. Uh, when we look at the unit count, I think it's important to note that traditionally on these projects, uh, the, the Board of Appeals will require that there will be a preference to Wakefield residents. Um, and that definition of Wakefield residents would include town employees and relatives. Um, and, um, so that there is an opportunity, a preference opportunity for folks that live or are strongly associated with Wakefield. We've also retained a traffic consultant. We recognize that projects of this sort, the traffic is always a concern. Giles Ham will be a member of our development team with Vanessa, a significant experience in Wakefield. And he will be doing a detailed traffic report that will be submitted and vetted by not only the Traffic Advisory Committee, but also the Zoning Board of Appeals during the detailed process that will go forward before then. So I hope, Madam Chair, members of the council, that this gives you somewhat of a broad idea of what is being proposed and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Do any of the counselors have any questions or comments? Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a question or a couple of questions, I, I think probably for, for Mr. Mayo more than anything else, and then a couple of comments. Just from a question standpoint, Steve, from a process of submitting comments, can you give us an update as to where we are in that process? And the extent to which we've been able to include any of the, the other boards that would be involved in, in the process going forward?
Well, this, this package was sent out to town departments for their comments. The boards, like the, the Board of Appeals will hear this, so they did not comment and wouldn't comment until they had a, an application in front of them, obviously, because they're in adjudicatory board on this. Uh, but I believe it did go to the planning board as well, and I don't think there's any conservation issues there, but if there are, that would go to the Conservation Commission. I do have some comments from other departments, though. That's what you're asking. The, both police and fire were concerned with the lack of parking spaces for the, for, needed for the, what was presented. I think that if you look at those units and you, and you run it out through our zoning, you would need 87 parking spaces on site. I think the show 67 is what the plan shows. Both Lieutenant Anderson and the Fire Chief were very concerned about parking spilling over into the street there. Um, as you know, that's kind of in our downtown and talking, and parking is at a premium. So they're both very concerned about that. I'm very happy that Mr. McGrail mentioned that there would be a traffic study because that was something else that Lieutenant Anderson wanted. Again, kind of a busy area. And the Fire Chief also mentioned, and this is more of a design, if and when it gets to a design issue, is that a fire hydrant will be required on the same side of the street. So, uh, that's an issue there. DPW weighed in as well. Uh, they had a lot of, of, um, comments on stormwater and on grading and sewer and use of the public way, but that is really not, um, that would be, that would be flushed out in the regulatory process when this happened. Uh, other than that, um, those were the main issues that I had back from our departments. But again, uh, when it is, when it does go to the Board of Appeals, then it is sent over to the other departments for their comments as well. So this is really the town council weighing in in the beginning for some of our department heads to send our comments over to Mass Housing.
And, and just from a comment standpoint, thank you very much for that. That's really helpful. So i- i- is there a regulatory or sort of legal reason why the ZBA couldn't have the opportunity to at least sort of, you know, share their comments, obviously understanding that would have to go through a public meeting before they formally weighed in on the project?
I mean, they are an adjudicatory board, so I mean, they really only hear something that's in front of them as an application. So, I mean, that's really, I mean, I guess it's kind of like the judge doesn't hear the trial before the trial sort of thing. So it's never, that, that's not how we do it. This is, this is for the council. Um, I can look into it, but we've never had their comments before on something prior to an application.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would maybe ask that we, we do look into sort of that question. The, the reason I say it is when we think about the planning board, the ZBA, you know, Conservation Commission, again, maybe less relevant for this project given the site, but certainly would be in other cases. I mean, obviously, there are individuals who spend a lot of time on these issues that have, you know, a lot of expertise and experience, certainly that, you know, those of us who are, are on the town council don't necessarily have. And so, you know, I think from a common standpoint, at least as a counselor, I, I find their, their opinion to be particularly relevatory. I, I guess just from a, a comment standpoint, I, you know, certainly appreciate, um, you know, Mr. McGrail and the, and the project team coming and presenting on this and sharing the detail. I did have a chance to go through that. And I, and I think the point about the need for affordable housing and, you know, I think the appropriateness of that particular area for affordable housing or, you know, development, given the proximity to downtown and transportation, certainly has a lot of merit. I, I do have concerns about just the size of the, of the project. It's a lot of units on a, on a piece of land that isn't, isn't all that big when you kind of add up those three parcels. And so certainly would ask that, uh, you know, if this is approved by, by the state and does go to the ZBA, that, uh, the, the team worked constructively with the ZABA to address the concerns that I, I think the community will have as well. Uh, again, it's just a, a pretty large project for the, the scope of the, the plot of land we're talking about. Certainly as well, you know, want to make sure that as we go through the process, we are mindful of the fact that, you know, there, there absolutely is a need for more affordable housing. We've approved a lot of projects, though, uh, in the very recent past in Wakefield between Tarrant Lane, Harvard Mills and others. And so I know that where, uh, those will put us, if not over the 10% threshold, they would put us fairly close. And so, um, you know, would also hope that that's something that is, uh, as the process continues, we, we keep in mind that, you know, there's been a lot of progress in Wakefield and that's, that's a good thing. You know, but that that should also drive what I hope is a collaborative process to come up with, you know, something that meets the needs that we all want to see in terms of affordability in the community while also making sure that we don't, um, you know, permit something that is, is inappropriate for that particular site. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly, Jonathan. Thank you. Steve, can I ask you, um, Jonathan's point about ZBA input, I understand them as an adjudicatory board. Can we hold off our comments until we hear from them or do we have to go first? Is there an order?
The, the normal processes, we go first and the, um, first of all, the ZBA couldn't really comment on this other than a meeting, number one, as, as we can. Number two, Mass Housing is expecting town council's comments by August 12th.
Got it. Oh. Okay, that's next week. All right. Thank you for that. Paul, and then Ed, and then Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm not sure who I want to address as to whether it would be Steve or it would be Tom. So on this particular day, w- w- we are being asked by Mass Housing to provide comment on a proposal that will be, that was presented to them for 40B development on Crescent Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
They're taking us, input from us at this time, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so so my, my, my concerns are, are, are tenfold on this appreciation. So this development is going to be bigger than what was put in on North Ave by 22 units. The size of this, I don't feel fits the area. Now, I know we're not, we may not be at 10%, but we're damn close being at 10% right now. Uh, we may actually be at 10%, but I wouldn't want to jeopardize a project in any fashion. I, I think that the overall size of the project is too big. Um, I'm not sure how the ZBA will look at that when they see it. I'm disappointed that there will not be enough parking spaces for the amount of proposed units. That's a 20-car restriction on a street that sees a lot of cut-through traffic and is a major access road for our fire department to reach the east side. Um, so I have a lot of safety concerns on this as well. If we refer this picture to the Crescent Arm picture, it's going to make Crescent's arms look like a midget next to it. That's how large this project is going to be. I, I would rather, I, I would like to see the proponents actually reduce it before they get to the ZBA, if that's all possible. I just don't think it's a fit. I personally don't see this being a fit in that location. And I am a proponent of affordable housing. But I just think that this is going to be not within the scope of that area. And another area, I mean, this is going to be as high as, if not at higher than Brightview when you look at it aesthetically. And, and that's a big building already. So, uh, I'm not sure. Uh, I, I'm a little bit, um, so do we have to put something in writing, Steve or Tom, to the Mass Housing? Is that what, what we have to do right now? And, and that's going to be fashioned, how? Do we see that before that gets sent on the 12th?
We can send that around, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, I would like to see that before it gets sent there. I, I, I mean, I just to see what direction the council's going in as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Um, Ed?
I, I think this building is a monster, um, and we're trying to stuff this very large building into a very small, like, footprint. If you look at the site currently, and I know that, um, Mass Housing encouraged counselors to do that, you can see how there's essentially three what had at least originally been single-family homes that have lawn, that have driveways, uh, that would all obviously be raised and to, in order to replace. And I, and I would imagine other probably two-family homes, you know, I don't think that they're necessarily, you know, still single families, but they, they have the, the looking character of single-family homes, as do a number of other homes along Crescent. So when you're taking that out of the mix and you're, you're trying to jam in a, a building of this size, and, and I understand that when developers come before the ZBA, they often overshoot in terms of what they're looking for, knowing that the ZBA will likely, you know, cut down a project. But, um, from a, a, a council perspective and representing the residents of town, this is way too big a project to be putting in, into this space. Crescent does get a good amount of traffic. If you look at that light, you see the kind of traffic that is, is going, uh, off water onto Crescent and from Crescent onto water. The idea of having inadequate parking is another concern. I mean, at a time where we're talking about how we, we revitalize the downtown and parking is obviously a big part of that, uh, the chance that we'd be losing even a single spot to a, a new housing development is concerning. And I, and I think we continue to have this issue about how are we taxing the, you know, putting a, a burden on, on the schools and our services? And that continues to be, be the case. I, I know, um, Mr. McGrail makes a 7.2%. I think when you look at all the projects down, that, that in the pipeline now, I think, and Steve, you can correct if I'm wrong. I think we're just, just shy of 10% or right around 10% when you factor in everything that is going to be coming online, um, in, in the coming years. So uh, I have real concern about this. I, I think it, it really changes the character of, of, of that area. And I think it has, if, if we're going to do something along those lines, it has to be something that's, that's more to scale uh, and, and more appropriate for the footprint that, that presents itself. I think it's like 25,000 plus, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, it's, it's not a particularly large space for what we're talking about here. And the stories that, it looks, it's at least five stories, but it actually even presents as bigger, parking on the first for living and then a, a pretty significantly taller pit roof as well. So I, I have a lot of concerns about what's been presented thus far.
I'm Tom. Thanks, Ed. And Tom, next, then Maureen.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to express a process concern about asking the ZBA for their opinion. And I say this as the person who may, I don't know what their decision obviously would be, but I may have to defend the decision by them. And I fear that if they failed at this point to object to one or more aspects of the plan, uh, they may later be reluctant to bring up such an objection or they may be attacked for, uh, supposedly inventing an objection later. They may also be open, make themselves open to the charge that they have somehow prejudged uh, the case by reaching a, a conclusion in writing uh, before the hearing has begun. So by all means, seek whatever input you want, as broadly as you want, but please leave the ultimate decision maker to make its decision after a hearing.
Yeah. No, Tom, I totally agree with you. I don't think we should be reaching out to ZBA as they have to rule on this. And I think that gets very tricky from a legal standpoint into defending it, that they, they should give an opinion prior to them having the hearing. I just didn't know if the order of when we could send our note be switched, but I, I understand it can since it's due August 12th. Um, so thank you for that. Um, Maureen, and then Julie.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Santos. I just want to echo some of what's been said. So Steve, I thought we also were closer to 10, and I'd love to have an exact number and, you know, have that be part of our letter, whatever letter is drafted and echo what Paul said about seeing that letter. I, um, just that first graphic kind of shows that, like, that little house to the left and then this development, it just looks out of sort. And I, um, you know, people want to move to Wakefield and we have had some great developments and our schools have not been overburdened by North Ave and the other ones, like our resources have been there. But, you know, from an aesthetic point of view, and it's not usually me, who's the counselor who talks about and it's not usually me, who's the councillor who talks about aesthetics, but just seeing that little house there, um, to that big development, it just seemed out of place. A four-story, you know, it looked like four-story unit. For, I mean, it's five floors almost, but, you know, apartments on four, plus the garage that takes up a floor, that's a pretty tall building. Um, and if you look at the house next door, it just looks out of sorts. So, here, the parking concerns, I know it always goes back to parking with some folks. It's not about the resources. I think we can figure that out. It just doesn't seem to fit what's in that neighborhood across from that tire store, kind of across from, you know, the rail trail's going to be in close proximity to there. It just doesn't seem to fit. Uh, so just wanted to add that, and I, I would love to see whatever letter is drafted, um, before August 12th.
Great. Thank you, Maureen. Um, Julie?
Um, thank you. Thanks for presenting this. Um, I guess, I, I will say, do you think it looks large for that area? Um, and, and I think I'm not gonna kind of, um, repeat what everybody has said here, and I do have great, um, confidence in our ZBA to, um, really approve something that will reflect the neighborhoods. I, from what I've seen, they do that very well. I will say that we definitely need affordable housing, and this is really the location I think we want to put affordable housing in, a downtown area, um, which, and in a town that we're making more walkable access to public transportation. Um, so even if we are close to the 10%, I really, I, I, I applaud you for, for doing this, and, because I think this is where we want to put it. Um, not this specific location, but a downtown location. And I will go on record, probably is the only person who will, but I, I think the parking is fine. I think we need to be moving particularly areas that are near public transportation to one parking space per unit. Um, this is slightly over that, but I think you can make accommodations by more biking, perhaps more electric vehicle charging, you know, smaller vehicles. I think that, that is not a concern, um, of mine at all, if we're really thinking towards the future and if we're really thinking of building a downtown that is walkable and bikeable as well as car accessible. So, um, you know, I, I know this will be a long process, but I'd like to also see that, that letter, because I'd like some of these ideas reflected in as well.
Thank you, Julie. Um, Paul, do you have another comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last question, if, if, if they can pull out this information too. We, uh, the ZBA just recently approved 26 to 32 Water Street. How many units was just approved for that? And when that comes online, how many, uh, uh, what, what's the impact going to be on that major intersection at that set of lights? Can that information be provided, uh?
I, I have that, I have that for you. You mean 2737 Water Street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that has 47 units.
That has 47 units. Do they have, uh?
Rental.
Clients with the parking there, do you know?
Uh, offhand, I don't know, but they do have a two-story garage in the back, so they had a lot of parking, as you recall.
Go ahead. So, is that, and when's that due to come online? Do you know that?
Uh, I think they're close to getting their certificates of occupancy, actually. They've been doing a lot of work there.
Yeah, and, and that brings, it, it brings up another concern about the impact, the amount of, um, of, uh, of dwelling units in a very tight area of our downtown, where we're, we're already discussing, or we already have discussed, the Envision program in traffic flows and, and components. How, how is this going to add into that mix on something that we've already started? I mean, you have two major intersections there, Crescent Street, and then again at Vernon Street. You've got the Realtor Trail. I wouldn't want anyone to be giving special permission to use the Realtor Trail parking lot as overflow for this development, shouldn't, when it is approved. Um, I, I, those are my only concerns at the moment, but thank you, Madam Chair. Let me speak again.
Certainly. Um, Brian, McGrath?
Yeah, I, I, if I could, I just want to make a, a comment, uh, on Mr. Donaco's, uh, statement on, I believe on 27, uh, 37 Water Street, that the residential units that went in there displaced office units. So, those are not, it's not like it's a, a new development on undeveloped land. Um, those, there's a significant amount of office units that were displaced to put in the residential. The office units usually, uh, result in more traffic impacts during peak hours to any particular area.
I, I, I'll give you that, Mr. McGrath. Matthew, kind of surprised to see you, uh, at tonight's meeting, but, um, the point taken as far as the business, but I still think residential is going to create more traffic than the business that ever did in that area. That's my opinion compared to your own, sir, and I respect yours at all times.
Any other comments? I have a, I have a concern about the size of it. Um, and I, while I appreciate what Julie was saying about her concern is a little bit different with regard to parking, I just worry that if we're 20 spaces short, while we want to encourage folks not to have cars, I'm not convinced that they're not going to have cars. And I would hate to see overflow parking anywhere on the streets. Um, so I, the, the scale is a little concerning to me. Do we need more affordable housing? Absolutely. And we've seen the, the, um, projects that we've made, that we've, um, supported in the recent past, a lot of Wakefield folks have moved in there, into those affordable units and, and town employees, and I love that. Um, so I do think there's a need for that, but the scale of this is just a little big. Uh, I guess I have faith in ZBA as well to do, um, a very thoughtful, um, review of the project. So, um, with that said, Steve, do we need, do we need a vote for us to construct the letter? Any vote that we need taken?
Yeah, I, I think maybe you would want to have me vote to construct the letter to, uh, Mass Hou- uh, excuse me, to Mass Housing, um, uh, outline the concerns of the council, and I will send that through you, Madam Chair, to take a look at.
Excellent. Um, so.
Others can call me, concerns.
In that letter will be shared with all the councillors. Um, so.
Yeah, with all the councillors, but we will not deliberate.
No, we will not deliberate, but, but folks should individually send their concerns, probably to Mr. Mayo, so he can compile, um, a letter that, that addresses all of the concerns we have.
And we've done this before. This isn't, um, we've done it for other units, so.
Yep. Um, Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I just want to say on behalf of, uh, Steve and Joe Bocelli, the principals, we, we hear your comments loud and clear. Our team does. Um, our goal is going to be to, um, the Bocellis are very, uh, responsible and respected, uh, developers. Our goal is going to be to work with the zoning Board of Appeals to come up with a final project that everybody is going to be proud of, and it is going to address the affordable needs of the town of Wakefield. So, we hear your comments, we understand, and, uh, we're going to do our best to, uh, to make things work well for everybody as we proceed.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, um, Mr. and Mr. Bocelli for taking part in the hearing, and everyone else that's involved, Mr. Sanders, um, and others, Mr. Salvo. Um, so we need a motion and a second for Steve to, um, construct a letter, uh, that will address all of our concerns, um, and send it to Mass Housing by August 12th. Moved by Julie, second by Ed? Yes. Um, and roll call vote, myself, yes. Ed?
Yes.
Paul? Paul? Yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Um, Julie?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's good. Um, thank you, um, Brian, and everyone else that took part in this hearing. We also need, oh no, this wasn't a public hearing. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Um,
Thank you.
Number 11, correct? Envision Wakefield. Steve? No, Bill. Bill is on Envision Wakefield. You got it. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to share the screen. Um, give me one second to pull up my PowerPoints. There you go. I'm assuming you can all see this?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so basically, this is just a summary of our meeting July 30th to discuss, um, the Albion Street reconstruction and start the discussion on, um, the materials for the Envision Wakefield project. Um, rather than going through the full PowerPoint that was in your presentation, I figured I'd save some time and kind of distill it down to really what I thought. Um, we heard a lot of common themes, I think, from the public as we were discussing. So, uh, so quick background, um, we received a $400,000 Complete Streets grant to reconstruct portion of Albion Street, um, really focusing on sidewalks and pedestrian connectivity from, uh, from North Ave to Main Street. Uh, we did not extend it onto the other side of the train tracks by, um, you know, by Gold Street and Murray. This is just between North Ave and Main. Um, what I've done is identified four locations that bump outs, though at least that we think a bump out would make sense. Um, looking at our first area, one, that's at the North, um, Ave and Albion Street intersection, essentially at the corner, um, by the Dunkin' Donuts. And the little insert there shows essentially what our conceptual sketch looks like. Um, we have a second location at 110 Albion, which is by Reynolds Auto Sales. Um, you have a photo kind of showing you where that is, and then, uh, bump outs being installed on both sides of the street in that location. Uh, Area 3 is by Barrage Realty, number 73 Albion. Um, this is our largest area where we could fit some, uh, bump out locations. And then the fourth is at the intersection of Foster and, and Albion, um, again, with, with two bump outs being installed. Um, what we discussed was really three main options. One, it was of, uh, uh, each of the bump outs being full porous paver bump outs, so it would stay as a, essentially hardscape. Uh, the second option was looking at, uh, an opportunity where we could install porous pavers, um, with a tree box, so we would have some greening. Um, one of the things we heard in some of the original, uh, meetings was to try to get trees where we can on the street, uh, because we're so constrained with the width of the sidewalk, really putting them within the sidewalk doesn't work. So, we'd have to use these bump out areas as a location to install those, those, uh, trees. So, we developed an option that really looked at, at hardscape and the trees. And then we had a third option where we looked at, um, softening up the area with some bio retention to get some snow on a treatment, and then adding in the trees within those locations as well. Um, some of the photos below each of the options give you kind of an idea of what they may look like, um, if we were to move forward with any of the three. So, what do we hear? We heard basically that the, everyone preferred options two and three, where we would be adding green stripes and, uh, greenscape and trees where possible. Um, one of the big items that we heard a lot was about the pedestrian scale lighting improvements, um, and that's something that we'd already been working on with the light plant, uh, with gas and light to install conduit as part of my bid project. Um, but then we would be looking to install the, the lighting at, at a little later stage, once we could get the funding for the lights. Um, we got some questions, um, including members of the council that wanted us to look at a dedicated bike lane and see if that's possible. Uh, a few other residents actually hopped on, on that comment as well, so I'm in the process now, reviewing standards and seeing what we can do to make that happen, if it's possible. I'm also calling some of the peer communities that have done this, um, although I haven't been able to find many that have parking on both sides, but I'm evaluating it, um, with peer communities and with Mastiote. And then, um, we talked a lot about the material that we would be using within the, um, within the, the, the streetscape. So, um, we were asked to, to look at red brick accent locations, so most of those would be probably in the bump out locations, uh, granite curving and down the whole roadway, which would be reconstructed. Um, that's what's there now, but we'd, we'd be looking at, uh, depending on the condition of them, either replacing it or, or, um, you know, resetting what's there. And then concrete sidewalks through the whole run. Um, we're looking also to incorporate some town funds into the projects, not just the, the $400,000 in grant funding, so that we actually end up with a complete street. Um, unfortunately, we, while we maxed out our grant funding, that would really create, um, only constructing at most of the bump out locations. So, we wouldn't actually have a complete street if you think about actually constructing the whole complete street. So, um, so we've incorporated some of those into our plannings for, uh, construction in fiscal, uh, 20 and, uh, sorry, fiscal 21 and 22. So, kind of looking at our next steps and preliminary schedule, I'm, I'm going to be looking to finalize our design and bid in, you know, late summer, early fall. Um, over the winter, um, the gas and light, we'll look to install conduits, um, for the electrical upgrade that's needed, um, underground before we can actually put in those lights that, that the folks want to see. Uh, spring of 21, we'll begin sidewalk and bump out work in earnest and get that all done prior to our requirement, which is, um, July of 2021. We have to have all the construction, um, completed and. And lastly.
Lastly.
Ooh, I'm getting some feedback. Uh, summer and fall of 2021, we'd be looking at repaving the street, uh, through our roads program contract. And then, um, I have to be, to be determined for the light installation in that, you know, we're, I'm hopeful that we can get it done in 21, uh, but I am gonna, I'll, I'll leave that as to be determined at this point until we can figure out all the logistics of that process. So, that's really what we heard, um, in the meeting. So, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I tried to keep it as brief as possible, knowing you have a pretty long meeting, and, um, most of you were at the meeting on, uh, Thursday last week. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm not sure how you want to handle this. If you, do you want to take the, um?
Oh, sorry. No, it would help if I unmuted myself, because that, you know, so people could hear me. Um, Paul Donaco, you had your hand raised first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Bill, thank you very much for the presentation. Bill, I, I, I've been a proponent of the proposed work for, I can't tell you how long, but, um, I have a question regarding, um, not the bump out or their location, but how they're going to be visualized. Through this process back in, when we started 2014, when we talked to Dennis Fazio, Dennis always told us that there are only a few trees that will allow um, uh, road salt to be close to them and still continue to survive. And those are the trees that you see on Main Street, which a lot of people do not like in my comments, uh, well, through my discussions. So, one of the ways of getting around that was to actually do a raised plant the box for the trees. Is that something that can be considered, Bill?
It definitely, it definitely can, Paul, but at the same time, while, you know, I know Dennis was looking at specific trees, the planning board has a whole host of trees, and that was actually provided as a comment as part of the meeting, but they have a list of specific street trees that, you know, would be salt tolerant. I've used some in my career, obviously, as well, and, um, you know, we would, we would look to use those. I, I would be more concerned, rather than the salt tolerancy, would be more of the root system and how that operates, because as I'm sure you see all over town, we have these higher root system trees that pop the, the sidewalk panels. I'm more concerned about that, to be honest with you. Most, you know, in the towns that I've worked with over the last 20 years, there's plenty of them that are located as close as we're looking to put these trees in, and they survive fine, so.
Uh, 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 okay, I, I, I'm, we're just going by experience of what we have existing in the town.
Understood.
And, and it's been something that I, I, I've been associated with for 20 of the years, at least. Um, so, i- it's, it, it is a concern. I like what's being proposed. Don't get me wrong. I like the bump outs, the locations. I was just more concerned we're trying to make it so that the trees lasted longer than. Now, is that going to be raised or is that going to be grade level?
Grade level. Yeah, the, the bump outs themselves will, will be curbed, so essentially next down the roadway. If you want to look at it that way, that's what we'll be doing.
Okay, so the level with the sidewalk?
Yeah. Uh, no, they wouldn't be level, you mean the bump outs would be level with the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yep, they would be.
They would be level with the sidewalk. Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. Nope. Uh, uh, that's, that was my only, my only concern and my only question is with the trees. I love the idea with trees. I just want cautiously. Anyway, you, you understand my point?
I understand it, and we'll, we'll make sure we look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Um, Jonathan, you were next, then Ed?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, uh, thank you, Bill. But this was, uh, a, a good presentation. I thought a really, a, a really good meeting, uh, last week as well. Um, just a couple of things that I wanted to, um, uh, comment on. First, I, I do appreciate the work to look at, at a, a potential bike lane, uh, on Albion Street. Um, I think as we think about and as we see sort of Harvard Mills coming in, um, you know, across the train tracks, as we see some of the vibrancy of the restaurants on Tuttle Street, I think Albion Street plays a really important role as a connector between, I think, two areas of, of what's becoming an expanded downtown. Um, and so to the extent that we can make Albion Street, you know, a little bit more pedestrian friendly, but also a little bit more friendly to non-car forms of transportation, I, I think over the long run, that's going to be helpful. Um, just the second comment that I wanted to make, I mentioned at this, uh, meeting last week as well, but, you know, given that we've talked about sort of Albion Street as kind of an arts corridor, uh, in Wakefield and is using that as part of the branding of that area, uh, would again love to see some opportunity to bring in some public art spaces as part of the planning that goes into Albion Street. So, as we think about what goes into those bump outs, is So as we think about what goes into those bump outs, is there a way that we can use them to both kind of reinforce the, the sort of arts identity for Albion Street as well as to create some opportunities to maybe bring some of the things that happen in the Albion Cultural Strange out into the public. I think that'd be a really interesting and, and I think great way of, of seeing the, the street creates more vibrancy and, and life as we move forward. But again, good work on the meeting last week and appreciate the update today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Ed?
Bill, you've done a great job in designing. I know you've been working on this for a long time and it's, it's, I think it's come along really well. For those that have been involved with the vision project or had come to any of our other forums previously, you know that there isn't always consensus when it comes to certain elements to the street. And I think that we found a lot of consensus. I was texting with Bill afterwards. And it was clear that trees and trees were, were pretty significant and, and lowered lighting were two of the big things that came out of that. I just remind everyone who may not have been able to participate in the meeting or, or any of the other forums prior. Albion currently doesn't have any crosswalks aside from at North Ave in Albion and Main Street in Albion. So when we're talking about complete streets and walkability, we are really creating walkability in a way we don't currently have it. Because people right now are kind of having to come dark between cars and essence. Because it's a one-way thoroughfare and it does tend to, to get people speeding down it. I think also these bump outs really help with the traffic calming effects. I know in speaking with Bill and DHB, that's, that's another benefit to this as well. And the fact that we're able to have this green, some green on that street. We don't have any trees currently. There's really no plantings at all. So anything that we can do, I think, is really going to improve that as, as we make that a connector between the downtown and public transportation and also a lot that's being developed on foundry. So I think this is really exciting and most importantly, this becomes a template for what is expected to come for the remainder of the vision project, which will run all the way from, from the lake right to the junction. So it gives everyone a chance to kind of take a test drive with all this, see what you like, see what we can do more of and see how we can make some modifications as we head into other phases of the project.
Mute it again. Any other comments? From anyone? Julie?
I just, I just wanted to add, it was, it was a really good meeting and, and Bill, I think you did a really good job of, of summing it up. And I thank you for looking into the bike lanes because I agree with Jonathan that I think this is a really important actor and that that is a something that we should seriously consider if it's possible. So thank you for talking to peer communities about that.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Ed, are you still up or is that? No, okay. Bill, thank you so much. The meeting last Thursday was a great meeting. It was nice to see the public engaged, local businesses engaged. I think it's exciting in something that was mentioned that this is a little taste of what we're going to expect for our bigger, bigger project in Main Street. So I'm really excited to see this done in, in a short amount of time. So thank you so much for bringing this to us. And I don't think no, Steve, are we, we're not voting on anything. This was just a little taste of the palette. You're on mute.
No, Bill will be going out to bid, taking your comments, but I think Maureen had her hand up. Maybe you jumped to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. Maureen, sorry about that.
I added it after, after Steve started. And I, I was in and out of the presentation last week, so I apologize if this was addressed. I, I look at this picture and echoing what Jonathan said, a lot of people use this as a cut through. And right now it looks beautiful and I can't wait for the trees and everything you're going to do. I just, I want us to consider those bad winter snow days because we've had two good winters, but I remember my first winter on the board. We had a lot of emails and communications about businesses not shoveling. And I just, I want to make sure that there's a plan and I saw Mr. Conway on here just about DPW and who's going to shovel and just to like factor that in because I, I, I envision those, you know, who's going to shovel around those and make sure that our folks aren't walking in the street as cars are trying to get by. So just wanted to put that in there and I'll say it again in the winter when there is actually snow and it's not 90 degrees.
Thanks, Maureen. Joe, do you have anything to add?
I would just say, so that's something as far as the snow is related, that's something that Bill and I talk about quite frequently. So we can move around basically all the design palette that we've discussed today. So we'll make sure we're doing our part and we're partnering with the Butters. So that together we can make sure that pedestrian access is safe and accessible to both those major corners of town. The other thing I'd just like to say is just give kudos to Bill and the staff at engineering. They've done the lion's share of design this and it seems like it's going to be something that's really going to get everybody motivated and pretty excited for what's to come in the future.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? No, great. All right. Well, thanks so much, Bill and Joe. We look forward to hearing more about this as the project proceeds. Okay. We are at an item number 13 announcements, if we have any further announcements.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a couple.
Sure.
So first of all, I, I would like to acknowledge all the condolences that were sent to the Dinoco household, especially from council and town hall. Is greatly appreciated. The kind letters and words were refreshing, to say the least, during times of sadness and sorrow. So again, I do want to thank everyone on the council for reaching out on the news of my brother-in-law's passing. So thank you on that. You know something? I think I'm going to cancel all the other things. That's my only comment for tonight, Madam.
Absolutely. Our pleasure, Paul. And please send Paula our love once again.
Thank you.
Ed, I think I saw your hand up and then Jonathan?
Right. And actually, I wanted to just raise an issue that I, I didn't find another place on the agenda where it's more appropriate to say it. So I'll, I'll put it in now. I, we have applications for the Wakefield Human Rights Commission that were, I guess, are due on the 19th of this month. I had requested that we have as an agenda item, a discussion about what the Human Rights Commission would look like going forward. It wasn't included on the agenda and I have concern that as an appointing body, we have not had the robust discussion that we had talked about having or and have not had that discussion with, with the school committee either. And the fact that there hasn't been that dialogue, I think, is concerning. The community had been pretty vocal around the time that the, the issues with the Human Rights Commission had come out a few months ago. And I think that we're not serving the, the residents well by not having that dialogue. And I understand from Madam Chair that she has discussed with the chair of the school committee and also I guess the chair of the Human Rights Commission, how all three of them would be interviewing people that had applied. I'm not clear that we have any more clarity in terms of what our objectives are for the Human Rights Commission going forward. How we can improve a culture that is had presented as problematic. We've lost four members of this commission and the fact that, that, that happened, I think, is indicative of something that requires discussion by all of us, by us as an appointing authority and the school committee as an appointing authority. And I think that just posting out and asking for applicants doesn't do the job. And I also have concern that one of the three people that is scheduled to be interviewing these people is the chair of the Big Human Rights Commission. And as we're aware, the chair of the Human Rights Commission tried to have the video hidden that, that ended up being, being public and people ended up seeing. So I, I do take issue with, with the way that we're approaching this going forward. I think we have both an opportunity, but also an obligation to do more than we're doing. And, and I would like to have this discussion. So I don't know if that means extending the deadline for applications and so we can have that kind of discussion, but I've not spoken with anybody about this aside, obviously, from Madam Chair when I raise that as an issue. And I, and I think that this is something that as a body, we, we should be discussing.
So, boy, it'd be fun to be in, in court right now against you, Ed. The chairman of the HRC did not hide any kind of video. She was so concerned with not having people's feelings hurt and how to deal with something that was very difficult, not just your own. And frankly, I would think others were more, should be more offended by what was said, but to say that she hit it is, is not being fair. I have had a robust discussion. I just haven't had it with you and with the, I've had it with other members of the council individually. Myself, Amy and Maria changed the process for how we're going to look at filling the HRC spots. You will all see the resumes. You will all get a chance to participate. I'm going to get a chance to sit in on the interviews with, with the chair of school committee, which had not happened before. So I understand that you might not like how it's being presented, but I'm pretty sure a lot of the other members of this council are fine with it.
We've never discussed it, Madam Chair. We've never as a body discussed it.
We haven't as a body discussed it. Well, we have discussed it in the past, though. We have discussed the fact that we're moving forward with this and you asked to be, you asked it to be put on the agenda and I said no, because the process had changed. And I'm not, I'm as concerned about getting good people on the HRC as getting good people on other committees and to try to do some training on other committees. I'm not, I don't think the HRC is the only committee that has, had, has made some slip ups. And frankly, to me still, what was more concerning than what was said at the HRC was the abject racism that was posted on some of your pages, on other people's pages, directly against the Black Lives Matter March, directly against the three young girls that created that. To me, that said way more about our town in certain aspects that was happening in our town than what happened.
To clarify, what I posted, I
No, no, no. Not what you posted, what people posted in support of you that were left to stand there. Bailed racist comments and not so veiled racist comments, which is one of the reasons I bailed on Facebook, because I, I just couldn't deal with seeing members of my community say things against three young women who, in conjunction with the police department, organized a beautiful community event. But we can certainly have a robust dialogue about when the resumes come in, if you'd like to discuss who you think should be moved forward or, or what concerns you have about folks that are, have put their names in. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think we change the process with how we're applying, with how we're appointing members. I don't think we have to reinvent the HRC. And frankly, right now, we need the HRC more than ever. We have people writing letters to, to citizens in this town who have Black Lives Matter signs on their lawn, letters that are, that are not, they're certainly not threatening, but they're wacky and they're offensive. We've had, we've had issues that the HRC really should jump in on to make our town better. So by all means, if, if other folks want to jump in. I don't have a problem with how we're moving.
Respectfully, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't disagree with you. We should have a robust HRC. But the HRC that we have and the HRC that, that was in place in the spring is not the, the robust HRC that reflects the best of what Wakefield is. So I don't disagree with you, but what I want to be able to see us doing is identifying what it is that we're looking for in our town's HRC and then recruiting and promoting it to people to get us there. And I think by just putting out a standard advertisement, which wasn't even discussed at, at our last meeting, but just slid, slid at the very end of it, is not the way to get there. We, why don't, what, what's, what's the harm in having a discussion about it? What's the harm in understanding these are where our priorities lie? You have very impassionately and appropriately raised several issues that are facing our community and candidly, society at large that are very troubling to many of us.
Right.
But let's talk about what are we looking for in terms of what our HRC can execute on? What can be the deliverables? And where can the confidence be restored? Because even the chair of the HRC indicated that they wanted to work to try to restore the public's confidence. We are the appointing authority, as is the school committee. We have a responsibility when things are not right to fix them. And I do not agree with the approach that has been taken to this point. I do not think that we're actually addressing the issue head on and having a constructive dialogue to get us to where ultimately I think we all probably share as a common goal. That's my concern. And I do not think, and, and I disagree that the chair of the HRC did not make attempts to try to hide the video. She admitted as such. She acknowledged as such. So that's not, that's not even a debatable, you know, a question at this point. That's a no.
Yeah.
And I've seen the emails. I've seen the emails that she sent relative to this. So I know exactly what she had asked for. And, and the fact that we're just kind of recycling the same way of doing things, albeit adding you and the school committee chair on, onto the interview process, that doesn't address, because I don't even know if, how you could even know what it is that you should be looking for in candidates, because we've never as a body discussed where our priorities lie for what we want to have in an HRC member. We've not had that discussion. So what are you looking for? What, it's, it's, it's like, it's like posting for a job before we've created the job description for it. That's how it feels.
Well, the job description as, as created back then, I think is fine.
It didn't work, though.
It didn't work. Four people resigned, but I still think the message of the HRC and, you know, those four people made some bad mistakes. They also did some, there was some excellent programming developed by the HRC prior to that event. So I don't think the HRC has completely not delivered on what we expected them to do. But I'll take Jonathan next. No?
All right, Madam Chair, I was, I had my hand up for just general announcements. You know, on this particular topic, I think I completely agree with everything you said and I'm supportive of your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Can I, I just want to speak up a little bit as the, so I've been the HRC liaison for the last two years. They are up in meetings. Anyone is welcome to join. I've gone to every meeting, especially the last three. So they're up and we can have that discussion. The moment to have a discussion about who we're appointing is when we get the applications. That's what we do for every other, every other 35 to 40 commissions boards that we have in town. We discuss when we have the applications of what we want that group to look like. We did it recently with, I mean, we do it all the time. We will do it with the disability commission. We talk about when we get the candidates, we read their letter, we read their resume. And then we make a decision and HRC is unique and the school board also gets to weigh in. And we've changed the process based on your, the concerns that you raised, Ed, and changed the process. And now Anne and the chair of the school committee will be involved in interviewing. That is not done on any other thing, but HRC is a very unique thing because their mission and their goal, which is all on their website, it's all out there. If you come to a meeting, you will see the good work that they are doing. And I also just want to highlight that less than an hour ago, their good work was so recognized that a random business in town sent them an anonymous $1,000, not anonymous, unsolicited $1,000 donation. So for all the chaos that's happened, people see the good work of the pride flag of MLK Day, of all the events that they do, and a business in town, not on Facebook, taking it off of social media, saw the good work that the chair, and I, I am livid that you're making this personal, but that good volunteers in our town, some who made a mistake and misspoke at a, at a subcommittee meeting. And we are, we are going to change up everything of five years of good work that they've done in our town? No, Anne has a plan and I as liaison will work towards that plan and it is recognized by people in town. And you are welcome to come to one of our meetings, monthly meetings. Come, have a conversation, see the work that they're doing. But to, we have a process of making sure that good people get on the board. That's what we do. That's one of our biggest responsibilities.
Julie, is this on this or?
No, it's, yeah, it's on this. And, and I think Maureen very eloquently said a lot of what I was going to say. I, I would actually argue that this committee is probably one of the most visible committees that we have in town. You know, all been to the MLK Day, to the Women's, the International Women's Day, the Pride events, the collaborations they've done, you know, a couple of years ago, they were talking about Black Lives Matter before it was on the front page of every paper with the Universalist Church. So I could not agree more that the time to discuss this is when we appoint people. I mean, I think you could argue that maybe all committees should have more of a vision from this body, but that's not just the HRC. And we've been talking about it forever with the ZBA and all of that. And so I really, I, I think the time is when we appoint them. And just to be clear, four people resigned. Only three were appointed by either this body or the school committee. One wasn't a member of the clergy who was appointed by the clergy council. So one of those fours was an open seat. The school committee had not taken up as well. So, so really, there's So really, there's, you know, there's going to be four appointments up for discussion between the two bodies and one that the church clergy. So it will be, you know, a fairly new committee. And I think under very, very good existing leadership that I fully support and I support everything that Maria and the other members of that committee have done to really, you know, try to make a bad situation better and continue the good work they have done.
Jonathan, new announcements?
Sure, unless anyone has any other comments on that topic.
Nope, it does not appear so.
All right. Well, so for something completely different then, just a couple of announcements that I wanted to share. First, for individuals, and I count myself among many individuals in town who are very keenly looking forward to this discussion. The school committee does have a special meeting tomorrow where they will be reviewing the proposed reopening plan from the administration. There has been an extraordinary amount of work that has gone into this, obviously, in pretty trying circumstances, both unknowns in terms of the level of state support from a budgetary standpoint for local schools, obviously, to the trajectory of COVID and things like that. And so I do want to sort of recognize and acknowledge the work the administration went into that. But, you know, strongly encourage parents in town and folks that are interested to tune into the school committee meeting tomorrow. I think it'll be a good discussion and certainly one that a lot of us are eager to see. My understanding is that following that presentation, all of the information about the reopening plan will be posted onto the school department website for comment. There also will be parent meetings that have already been announced and I think we're in the item today as well as posted on social media over the next couple of days. So if folks do have comment on that, the school department will be taking that into account. And then my understanding is the school committee will be voting next Tuesday on sort of a final plan based on all of that. All of this is obviously still subject to a whole lot of unknowns, including what the state will do, as well as again, what happens over the next couple of months and even couple of weeks in terms of the COVID trajectory. But want to make sure that folks are aware, this is a pretty significant week in terms of the school reopening plans. On another topic, I mentioned sort of the Albion Arts Corridor earlier. I did have a chance to visit the Albion Culture Exchange and see the handicap accessible bathrooms that have been installed. They look great and certainly, once we're able to get back to normal, that's a great addition to that site. I have spoken to a couple of folks there as sort of the new liaison there. And I know they're eagerly awaiting the opportunity to go out to bid with a project to add a handicap accessible entrance in the back of the building. And that's in relatively good shape, thanks to some great work from the DPW and also add some signage to the front of the building. So certainly look forward to seeing that move forward and again, seeing that kind of come in as part of the Albion Street Corridor. And then just finally wanted to mention, I do have socially distant office hours again coming up next Saturday. I'll be outside Saturday morning from 9:00 to 10:30 adjacent to the farmer's market. So folks, please stop by and say hello. Thank you.
Any other comments before I, Maureen? Oh, that was your hand, sorry. Mute. You're on mute.
Almost made it. Sorry, just a couple of updates. One, if people got their vote by mail, in the mail, please return it September 1st. So we will not have another meeting until then. Look out for when you can go and early vote and drop this off at town hall and return your ballot. Really important for everyone to vote. As important, just to remind everyone that August 18th is the 100th year anniversary of women in America getting the right to vote. So I will be doing some sort of office hours. Stay tuned for that. But a big day for a lot of women, or all women, but in America, 100-year celebration. I also just wanted to remind everyone that we are slowly opening. So go to the library, you can pick up, they leave it in a, they leave your books, call them or go online. They leave them in a paper bag outside. And then two other questions, matters not anticipated, to ask Steve to kind of give us an update. As we had this meeting today, I realized what a big, a little vacuum we're having with Paul being gone and the economic director not being hired, but the sidewalk sale and bamboo shoot, getting like a new business owners coming to town. And so next meeting, if we could just have an update about how that's going and, you know, talking about Albion Street, just one person who kind of can talk about all of that and how that hiring process is going. And then on that, as we talk about affordable housing, I know there's a process and I don't know who's in charge of it. I know it's a regional one. And I think on my time on the board, I've actually never gotten an update and I've had some concerns from people as they apply for those affordable housing units that prioritize working in Wakefield or living in Wakefield. And I'd love if we could have them come to a meeting and kind of just tell us like how the process goes and, you know, how's it looking? I don't know. I don't know much about it, Steve, so I don't know if that's crazy. But I'd love to learn more about it as we kind of, you know, get closer to the 10% mark. But just when we have residents who want to apply, how's that process go? So that's it. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. I just want to remind folks that during the time of COVID, as we approach school, hopefully starting in a couple of weeks, that they should stop driving like maniacs. So the red sign that says stop, you actually should stop at it. You should not talk on your phone when you drive. You should not veer into other lanes of traffic. It's been a free-for-all. I don't know if anyone else has noticed it, but it's been crazy. I talked to Chief Scory, he's also recognized it and they are upping their traffic enforcement. So I really hope people get tweaked a little bit to follow the rules, especially where we have kids walking to school in the very near, hopefully, walking to school in the very near future. Finally, I want to acknowledge that Claire Moss is moving on to California. She's leaving. The DPW and I received a lovely letter from our former director, Rick Stinson, who noted a lot of great things that she had done while she's been in Wakefield. In addition, just bringing her, the communication skills, her dedication to Wakefield, but also as the DPW environmental manager, she really made a lot of inroads into something that we hadn't been doing so much before. And I know that Julie had worked with her on things and wanted to just say a couple of comments.
So I really enjoyed working with Claire. I think I was impressed with the types of programs and the things she made us think about in town. And so in addition to saying some nice things about her and mentioning that, you know, she worked on this dashboard that's going to be rolled out so we'll be able to see some of the environmental things that are happening in town on our website. She got a lot of the funding for the municipal vulnerability, of course, with others at DPW, not just her, but her leadership helped and the rain barrels and the composting bins. Really, Steve and I think Joe's not on anymore, but I just really hope that some of the initiatives that she started that we can figure out how to institutionalize and somehow continue to cover them and move forward on sustainability. So that's really all I wanted to add.
It just as an announcement, before I give it off to Steve and Tom, if they would like to say anything, the meetings are going to be starting at 7:00 PM moving forward in September. There are a few of us whose jobs are starting to be a little more normal with hours and some of us are actually going into Boston again or commuting certainly. So we'll be starting at 7:00 PM, starting with the September date. Thank you all for understanding that.
Madam Chair, will they still be zoomed?
They will still be zoomed, but we will try, I think it's important maybe for us to meet as a group, if we can do so safely. And if WCAT can support that, we won't do it until that can happen.
Okay, thank you.
I will let you know absolutely. And if for some reason, some of us can zoom and some of us can meet in person when that happens, we'll talk to WCCT about that as well. Does anyone have anything, matters not anticipated? We've talked about everything. Okay, Steve, how about you?
I'm all good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. All right. I need a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jonathan. Vote to adjourn, Ann. Yes. Ed? Julie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Peter? And Maureen?
Yes.
Thank you all very much for watching. Thank you, WCAT, and we'll see you in September.